I just wanted to remind everyone that if you weren't able to submit a question at the time of registration, you can always open up the chat section, which is available at the bottom of the screen and type a question and it'll come up on the right-hand side. And then that way I can make Kyle aware that we received a question in the chat and we can discuss that one as well. So if anyone wanted to do that, you can go ahead with that as well. We have factored in some time to pick out some other questions as well. So the next question that we had at the time of registration came from a constituent named Nikki. Nikki raised some questions with regards to pensions for seniors. I know that there's, there was a lot of confusion going on during COVID and seniors getting additional funding and Kyle spoke about this many times before. So she wanted to know, I guess Kyle's thoughts on the raise in pension for seniors at this time.
Yeah, I think that one of the things we look at is seniors are eligible for CPP, OAS, which is old age security, and GIS, which is the guaranteed income supplement. All of these do not provide enough money for our seniors. And the government has offered a one-time COVID payment to seniors that is going to increase what they get. I think it was $500 or $600. Now, I acknowledge that is something for our seniors while they're going through COVID-19. But what we've seen right now is the government is willing to spend money to help all kinds of people, whether it's through SERB, which is the emergency relief benefit, or whether it's through the wage subsidy. So to me, the time is come to increase the money that we give to seniors. Seniors are the people that built this country, that they worked very hard, and we owe them a debt of gratitude. And that debt of gratitude should be that they are actually given an amount of money that they can comfortably live on. And if somebody is only receiving OAS and GIS, they do not have an income that is above the poverty line in this country. And to me, it's a real shame that we have seniors that are living in poverty after they've contributed so much, especially in a country that is as successful as Canada is. So I certainly spoke out on the money that was delivered to seniors was slow. You know, I called out the Prime Minister and the government several times, saying, why does it take three months to deliver this money? And that it's not enough. It has now been delivered, but we have to make sure that we find ways to make sure that our seniors have the kind of money they need to be able to live at a decent standard of living in their retirement. So Nikki, if you're on the call, thanks so much for the question. And hopefully that answers it.
Okay, great. Thanks, Kyle. Actually, I've just noticed that we got a question typed in the chat from Julia. I'm just gonna read it out for you here, Kyle. The federal deficit is expected to hit $343 billion this year and the federal debt load to hit 1.2 trillion. Is there a plan for Canada's economic recovery after this record spending by the federal government?
Well, I think, I think the government has spent a lot of money in $343 billion. It's helped us in the sense that we are really doing well in the fight against COVID-19. So I don't, I don't really criticize the fact that they've spent $343 billion. I think, yes, it's a lot. And maybe they've spent, you know, we've all heard reports that the Canadian Emergency Relief Benefit, people have accessed it that shouldn't have, and there's been perhaps some wasteful spending there. The real big issue for me is that in the, over the last five years prior to, prior to COVID-19, the federal government ran a deficit of approximately $78 billion. So they added $78 billion of debt during the good years, when the economy was going very well and when there wasn't a crisis. And now to add an additional $343 billion, what's happened is our credit as a country has now been downgraded. We're the only G7 country that has had their credit downgraded as a result of borrowing through COVID-19. And that's directly related to the $78 billion of debt that was racked up in the previous five years when the economy was good. I don't know about other people, but you know, the old saying, you know, make hay while the sun shines. And in those five years, when we were having good economic times, we should have been paying down debt. That, in that, that's what in 2015, the government, the previous government, the conservative government, left a budgetary surplus. And they were on track to continue those surpluses and use that money to pay down debt. Unfortunately, we went the other direction. And when you think about it, we had a federal debt of around $600 billion before the Liberal Government came in in 2015. We're now over a trillion dollars. So for the entire 153 years it took to rack up, to bring out the debt up to about $600 billion, we almost doubled it, a little over a billion, in the last six years. And this is debt that's going to be very difficult for our next generations to have to pay down. And servicing of the interest on that debt is going to be significant. It's going to be tens of billions of dollars a year that we're going to be paying. It's like when you, you know, max out your credit card and your minimum monthly payments go way up. That is kind of where we are now with the debt. And I think we needed better fiscal responsibility in those previous five years. Tough, tough stuff for us right now.
Okay, great. Thanks, Kyle. And we, I also received a message, going back to the original question that was about the rural internet. Michael is here under the name Christine. So I'm gonna ask technical support to unmute Christine Thompson. And then Michael has some follow-up questions on the rural internet topic, if you're okay with that, Kyle.
Yep, that's great.
Okay, Michael, I think you're unmuted now, so go ahead.
Hi, thank you. So I appreciate Kyle's feedback and with regards to making internet a priority for us here in rural Caladan. My, my question, I guess my, my follow-up question or my second part of that question would be, is there any expectation or thoughts around a timeline for making that a reality? Obviously, the, the challenges of living in a, in a, in a higher cost area with higher property taxes and even so far as paying a broadband levy, although the levy itself isn't astronomical by any means, but it'll, it'll come down to the, to the principle of it. I previously lived about eight minutes north of here in Simcoe County with lower housing costs, lower property taxes, and blazing fast internet. So I, you know, not trying to so much make a comparison of the two, but is there a roadmap available on timelines for, for making that a reality here? Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks for the follow-up. I think, I think the challenge right now is that the current government has a formula that they're trying to follow, and that timeline is 2030. And I'm not confident they're gonna meet that timeline of 2030, given they haven't met any of the benchmarks in the previous five years. You talked about a, like a broadband surtax, I think. I don't think I'm using the right term there, a broadband levy municipally. One of the things that we call for in our rethink of how we're doing rural broadband is to actually allow municipalities to become part owners of the infrastructure. So they could actually partner with some of the businesses that want to expand broadband in, for example, in Caladan or anywhere in Dufferin. And that's part of our program. It's actually all available. And if anybody here is, is on the call and you're interested in actually reading our policy document, it's not too long, it's only about 12 pages. It talks about a lot of new and innovative ways that we want to quickly enhance rural broadband. Our plan is to have rural broadband across Canada in five years. So if you're interested, after this call, please send, send an email to kyle.cback@parl.gc.ca and I will send you off a copy of our rural broadband policy paper that I think actually can make a difference. I think we really do need a paradigm shift on this. The old system of what we're doing is not working. These one-off little fundings that we're giving to large telecom companies really has not expanded broadband service in rural communities. We have to move away from that model. And I think what we're looking at is very innovative, very different, and we'll actually have a different outcome.
Thanks for that, Kyle. I'm actually gonna put it now to Erin, who I believe asked a question at the time of registration. I know we were hopeful that the mayor might be on in time to answer your question because I think it might be a little bit more municipally geared, but I'm sure Kyle would still be thrilled to hear what you have to say. So I'm gonna ask technical support to unmute Erin Willoughby, please.
Hi, sorry. I am actually trying to put a baby to sleep while I'm listening to this town hall. So I don't know if you have my original question there.
Yep, yep, that's no problem. I can just read it out, no problem.
Sorry, I'm just trying to listen along.
That's okay, that's okay.
Of course. Good luck, good luck getting your baby to sleep.
Okay, so I'll just go through what Erin wrote to us, Kyle. So first, it was with regards to speeding in Bolton. But I think the issue that we might wanna talk more about with you is the issue of vacant stores in downtown Bolton. And if there's any plans or suggestions to bring business. She listed an example that there is a cafe in downtown Bolton that has appeared to be coming soon for two years, but has yet to open. It seems like there are missed opportunities in our town and there's nothing to be drawing people to it. Is there anything that you can say on that, Kyle?
Yeah, well, it, I think it's, I think it's a challenging issue right now, especially during COVID-19 because we're losing some businesses all across the riding. I hear every week of new businesses that unfortunately are going to have to close. So I think it might, might get a little bit worse before it gets better. Not only are, it's gonna be challenging for new stores to move in, we're seeing some existing businesses unfortunately not able to survive during COVID-19. Part of the issue with that has been, from my view, is the very slow way in which we roll, the government rolled out supports for businesses. When the crisis first hit, they offered a 10% wage subsidy. When other countries around the world were offering 75 and 80%, it took almost a month and a half for the government to realize that a 10% wage subsidy, when you tell a business you have to close down, is not going to allow them to retain employees and stay in business. So then they changed to a 75% wage subsidy and took another very long time to roll that out. Made the terms and conditions to qualify for the wage subsidy very complicated, such that many businesses could not qualify. And the same thing has happened with the Canadian Emergency Bank Account, which is another way that small businesses can access funds. Again, the rules were very complicated, very slow to roll out, and it's a loan as well. It's called an emergency bank account, but in fact, it's a $40,000 loan. I hear from businesses every week who say they are trying to get these funds through their banking institution and their applications are being rejected. They don't know why. They can't get in touch with a government department to figure out which one. They speak to government departments and government departments say, no, 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 we're not involved in that decision. You have to talk to this other government department. So the rollout for business supports has been very poor, from my estimation. And that's why we're seeing so many businesses struggling all across the riding. For me, I think what we're going to have to do is find ways to invest in businesses post-COVID-19. Because even businesses now that are operating with outdoor patios, reduced capacity and other things, their other costs are not being reduced. They still have their rent to pay, they may have a mortgage, they have salaries, all kinds of things. And many businesses are struggling. We need to have a transition plan from this government for businesses as we move through the various phases. And that's one thing that we have not seen. The federal government has not put forward any full coherent plan to help transition businesses through COVID into reopening. Even now, when you, when you enter phase, enter phase three, restaurants can't be packed, other places can't, gatherings are limited to 100 people. So many restaurants are still at significantly reduced capacity. And yet they have all their, their normal costs that go on, their hydro costs don't go down, their gas costs don't go down, all these kinds of things. So we really need this government to step up and deliver a coherent plan to support our businesses as we try and get to where we can completely and fully reopen the economy.
Okay, great. Thanks, Kyle. Let me just see if we have anything else here that's perfect. Okay, so we had a question from Jennifer Shannon. And this is another one that maybe is a little bit more municipally geared, but I don't know if you might have an input on it. So it's with regards to transportation. Bringing more transportation to the Bolton area, GoBuses, trains, those sorts of things. Is there anything that you could speak to with regards to that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's challenging when you deal, when you talk about Go Transit. These are, these are, that's a provincial, provincial issue, provincial responsibility. What I, one of the things that I talked about when I campaigned was we need far better transit service all across the riding, especially in Caladan, whether you're, you know, whether you're in Bolton or sort of anywhere else. The lack of transit is a huge, huge problem when we're trying to move people from Bolton down into Brampton, Mississauga, Toronto, and other places where they're working. I've called for large investments from the provincial government with respect to urban transit. And this is where a government can actually help. They can get involved and partner in those projects. So I think we have to play the long game when we're talking about transit. All levels of government, provincial, federal, and municipal, they all have to say transit is going to be critical, not only for just the quality of life of people living in Dufferin, Caladan, but in fact, if we're looking at trying to meet our carbon, carbon emission targets under the Paris Accord, if we don't have large investments in transportation and transit, there's going to be real challenges. So it's great that Go service wasn't stopped to Bolton. I know there was some discussion that that was going to take place. For me, with transit, if transit isn't affordable, convenient, and pleasant, people are going to stay in their cars because they can stay in their cars or trucks. They've got their personal space, it's comfortable, all of these things. I know myself, at one point, when I lived in Brampton, I tried to go to work in Toronto and take the Go train. And, and if, if my day finished early, there wasn't a return Go train service. And that goes to convenience. I think, much like the old movie with Kevin Costner, Field of Dreams, when they talk about it, if you build it, they will come. If you build a transportation system that is convenient, has lots of options, runs on time, you know, is clean and friendly, all these things, people are going to use transit. And so that is, that is my pledge, that all three levels of government have to come together to make large investments in, in transit. And, you know, Caladan deserves to have, and Bolton in particular, they deserve to have a better transportation system.
Great, thanks, Kyle. We got a question as well from Robert Pinkney. Robert was wondering about the COVID numbers in the US. They're very concerning. What are your thoughts on the US-Canada border?
I think the government's made the absolute right decision to keep the border closed now. I think they've just announced that it's to August 21st. The COVID numbers in the US are staggering. And we're seeing those, those numbers seemingly increase every single day. And I think, you know, that's the danger of trying to reopen the economy too soon. It's the danger of people choosing to congregate closely together when we were supposed to be social distancing. We've got to keep the border closed. I don't know for how long. But I think until we see US COVID numbers going down, the border is going to have to be closed to non-essential travel. So when we say the border is closed, it's actually just closed to non-essential travel. Goods can still flow across the border. And if you have essential travel, you can go across the border as well. But the general person wanting to go back and forth across the border, they cannot do that. And I don't know when the US numbers are going to go down. They should be, you know, our curve is flattening. I think we announced today in Ontario, it was announced that we had 108 new cases in the entire province. You know, there are some states in the US that have 17,000 new cases a day. I think, I think Florida was somewhere around there. If they can't get it under control, then I think the border's going to have to remain closed to non-essential travel. Otherwise, we're putting at risk all the hard work we've done here in Canada. So the government has really done a good job in getting the COVID-19 numbers to go down with the approach they've taken. So I certainly give credit where credit's due to the government, and they, they've done a good job. And, and the plan has worked. We are really, really, really flattening that curve.
Great, thanks, Kyle. In the chat as well, we got a message from Andrea. She wants to know how you will improve Bolton as opposed to providing criticisms. And I also see now that the mayor is on the line, so I don't know if we wanna also pass that over to you, Mayor Thompson, if you have some input on that as well. Kyle, I'll let you go first so we can get...
Well, I'm glad that Mayor Thompson, we got you into the call. I apologize for the technical difficulties that have kept you out of the call. If you wanna make some opening remarks, that would be great. And then I, I, what I will say to Andrea, who's answered, who's put in this question, I think dealing with a particular, a particular part of Caladan and a business improvement area, those are issues that are best decided by local and municipal politicians. Where I think the federal government has a role is to partner with municipalities if they want to try and have a business improvement area, provide some funding for that. I do criticize the government for the rollout on businesses because I think they did a poor job and businesses have suffered. I try and call things like I see them. I think they've done a great job in reducing the COVID-19 numbers with their approach. But conversely, I don't think they did a great job in protecting our businesses. And that's why I think it's gonna be challenging to not only attract new businesses, not just in Bolton, but all across this country. And it's gonna be challenging to, to keep the businesses that we have through COVID-19, which is why I'm saying we need a recovery plan from the federal government as we transition back to a normal economy. And turn it over to you, Alan, if you're there.
No, thank you, Kyle. And thank you very much for having us on. And I'm sorry, I've got into technical glitches. I got myself locked out. So I had to get my, one of my admin assistant to get in on her thing. So I don't know what's happened. I've been using Zoom all week, but it's given up the ghost for me tonight. So anyway, thank you for being patient. But Bolton is definitely an important thing. And bringing back all-day parking is one, is we were having a huge problem with traffic down there. If you don't change something after 20 years, then you're, it's never gonna fix itself. Another challenge is we have some absentee landowners, so this vacancy discount has gotta stop. I think we have to get them, you know, make them competitive to wanna get out and rent these facilities out so that we can get vendors in. Another thing, I totally agree with you, Kyle. The business approach, we need business people to really understand what the businesses are going through. Councillor Rosa, along with Councillor Gross, but Councillor Rose has taken the lead. We have a revitalization committee underway. We've done a number of studies. You know, there's a lot of things that we can do as a town. And enough talking, enough studies, let's just, we got a plan, just let's put, implement it, get it into place. The CIP has definitely helped the downtown core, but we gotta still, you know, it's gonna take time, but especially COVID sure hasn't helped. My concern is, one thing is red tape processes as far as opening up for restaurants, being able to have patios and different things before it all. You always had to go through committee of adjustment, a lot of that. So the province has relaxed a lot of the processes. So it's given us, under the COVID Emergency Act, we can do a lot of those things to help businesses get underway. We need everybody to wear masks at this point because it's, we cannot afford to shut the municipality and our businesses down again. So we're going to have to implement practices such as masks, face shields, whatever. Wear something so you're protecting yourself and protecting others. So it's just those things that we're doing. But we're all gonna have to work together. It just can't be the municipality. We need yourself, Kyle. We also need Sylvia Jones. We all need to work together and work with the business community to find that. And hopefully, the chamber's looking to revitalize itself. It's gotta move quickly to get things going. We really, at the time we needed the chamber and we don't have one, it's been really difficult.
Sean, I see, I see a quick question in the chat. I'm gonna take over your job for a second. I see another question here from Andrea. She's saying, what about the commercial, the commercial rent subsidy? Tenants are only having to pay 25% rent if they apply. It's actually not the tenant that's able to apply for the commercial rent subsidy. And that's also been one of the criticisms that I made of the government in their rollout to support businesses. The landlord has to apply. And if the landlord does not apply, then the tenant has no way to access those funds. And there are some landlords who are choosing not to apply, and they're asking their tenants to pay the full rent. I have said this very, very publicly, that landlords who are, who are doing this and not working with their tenants to provide them with some rent relief when they've been ordered by the government to shut down their business are not behaving in a way that I consider to be very Canadian. And I urge them to reconsider that approach. I've heard from landlords who tell me that it's not a great process to apply for the commercial rent subsidy that then gets passed on to the tenants. They're upset about how it's been structured, the amount of information they have to give to the government, et cetera, et cetera. So again, I think the rollout of that program was a little too complicated and not made available to tenants.
Great, thanks, Kyle. Mayor Thompson, now while we have you on the line, I do have a few municipal questions that were submitted originally. I see that Carol Anne is on the call, and Carol Anne had some questions with regards to garbage cans in the area. So I'm gonna ask technical support if they're able to unmute Carol Anne, and then she can address that question to you.
Hi there.
Hi, Carol. How are you?
Not too bad. Yeah, I'm just, as I walk my dog around the blocks and stuff like that, and I know my park that's right here, there's no garbage cans in order to dump the dog poop, right? And I'm noticing when I walk the dog and I see so many people don't pick up after them, after their dogs. And I think that if there was a garbage can, maybe that might be more incentive for people to pick it up and put it in there because they don't wanna walk around the block with the bag of poop.
Have you reached out to your councillors on that at all, Carol Anne?
No.
Okay. Well, you know what, but you know, you got a very valid point, and to me, that's an easy fix. So I'm gonna be talking to Public Works tomorrow to see what we can do to get something installed for the Goodfellow Park, to see what we can do for that. Okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
I think it's a logical ask, yeah.
You know, definitely this one. And then there was like some nasty ones in there too, so.
And you know, even when you have the garbage can, you know, it's just, I, I don't know what it is with some people. They just won't do anything about it. But you know, let's get it there so it creates an environment for people to do it, so.
Yeah, I can get it, at least give a little bit of incentive, right?
For sure, for sure. So thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Kyle, there's also another comment in the chat from Susan. Susan mentioned that due to the numbers of COVID in the US, why are flights still being permitted to enter Canada? From the news today, it was indicated that over 20,000 passengers were flagged as a risk of not self-isolating, but nothing was done to follow up. Do you have any information on that?
I don't. And I read those news reports myself over the last couple of days. It's, it's very disturbing that people who are at, who are, so when you come into Canada, you have to self-isolate for 14 days. And if you're not self-isolating, you are putting people at risk. You may not have COVID, but you may. And especially given the numbers that we're seeing down in the United States. I think the government absolutely has to do something about this. In countries that have been incredibly successful, more successful than ourselves, whether that was New Zealand or if we look at Taiwan, they were very strict in the implication, in the implementation of these protocols. They tracked people who were coming in, they required them to self-isolate. They would put trackers on their cellphones and say, you are required to self-isolate. And then if they saw those people with those trackers, not self-isolating, those people were in trouble. And I think we're having so much success right now in getting these... And I think we're having so much success right now in getting these numbers down that we cannot risk it, uh, by not taking an aggressive approach for people who are traveling into the country. Uh, so, uh, this is absolutely an issue that, uh, needs to be brought up with the government. Uh, it's disappointing that, uh, we don't have Parliament sitting right now. That was a decision by the current government, uh, to continue to have Parliament suspended. Uh, they did that, uh, with the support of the NDP party. Uh, I think that, and we've, I, I've been very clear on this. Uh, I think that if, uh, we can express, expect uh, people working in grocery stores, uh, to be working during COVID-19, uh, we can expect a member of Parliament, uh, with a reduced quorum where you can socially distance, there's room to have about seventy-five or eighty members in the House of Commons appropriately social-distanced and wearing a mask, we could have Parliament and we could be asking these kinds of questions and dealing with other issues for Canadians. And I've been incredibly disappointed, uh, that the government, uh, with, with the help of, uh, the NDP decided that we would not have Parliament sit. And I've had people, uh, message me about this, why aren't you sitting? Everybody else is working. Well, believe me, uh, I want to be. I'm, I'm actually here in Ottawa right now and in my office here and, and, uh, I wish we had, uh, I wish we had Parliament tomorrow.
Thanks, Kyle. Uh, I think this will be the last question we take here because it's, uh, nearing eight o'clock. But I noticed also that Jane was on the line and, uh, Jane had a question also about public transport in Bolton, transportation in Bolton. Kyle already touched on that, Mayor Thompson, but is there anything that you would like to add on that?
We do have a public trans, uh, trans system now underway. Um, it's, you know, constantly, uh, work improvement. COVID is really throwing a wrench in the gears as far as developing it, but, uh, this is something that is here to stay. It's something that we're developing. And, uh, hopefully we can have better use. Another thing that we're definitely working on with the city of Vaughan as well is getting go into, uh, just north of Bolton there, uh, on Humber Station Road and, uh, trying to get those lands protected. Uh, the city of Vaughan needs it so that they can have their stops. The only place we can park the trains is, is the Bolton area. But, uh, I mean, for, it's really, uh, Calladen Go is really what it's called because it's for the Calladen area and we're going to need a sizable parking lot, which we can do to allow people to come off the, uh, you know, the, uh, the MLCO parkway as well as other areas to get cars off the road, especially Highway fifty, the four twenty-seven is going to take years to get built. And, uh, so it's extremely important that we got to find other ways of modes of transportation. And I think this is something that's extremely important going forward. So, yeah, we're looking at every angle we can possibly do to see how we can move people. I know we had a real challenge with, uh, even the go bus, uh, being, uh, discontinued and, uh, we're, we're working constantly with that to, uh, to enhance that, to get better times for people to get connected to certain areas. And also on how to get on the TTC even out at the Vaughan Station. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of work underway and a lot of dialogue, but it's, uh, you know, as the residents say, well, when's it happening? And that's the other thing. I was kind of hoping, you know, this summer, this fall, we'd have a lot done. But again, as we all know, COVID is really putting a wrench in the gears as far as finding those solutions, but we're going to get there.
And, uh, Mayor Thompson, when I was asked the question, I, I said that this is something that all three levels of government have to be prepared to. Uh, especially with respect to funding. I don't believe there's a federal government role in determining where go transit should be or where the transportation network should be. We should be the partner that is providing funding, uh, to the, to the province and the municipalities for whatever, whatever those priorities are.
And Kyle, I totally agree with you. I think we're the only, uh, what, you know, of the G seven, we're the only nation that the federal government doesn't contribute to transit. You know, for moving people. And that, that's something that's a, is spellbinding. You know, in the U.S., it's, you know, it's all either federal or state that runs it. Here it's the local municipalities and we don't have the, uh, the finances to, uh, maneuver that, like Toronto was even struggling. So, uh, I think John Torrey was offered a, uh, a gift and he didn't take it, but I really think it should be a provincial federal responsibility. Helped them in this, and this is where the municipality step up is help minister and deliver the local service. But it's, it, you're right. It has to be a three-way or we're not going to be able to deliver what the residents are looking for, and that's why our roads are impacted.
Yeah. And, and, and as I said earlier, transit is, is such a key to quality of life. Uh, and it's also key to us meeting, uh, our carbon emission reduction goals, uh, all across this country. When we're, you know, sitting in our cars, uh, uh, like a parking lot on the four-ten, you know, we are massively contributing to, uh, to, uh, climate change, uh, and increased greenhouse gas emissions. So we have to, we have to find ways to fix it. Um, Shauna, I do actually, uh, I do see another question here. We started a little bit late. Uh, so I think, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna grab one question that I see that was submitted here. Uh, and, uh, if you're, uh, Mayor Thompson, if you're willing to stay on a little bit more.
Absolutely.
Maybe we could jump into, uh, one of the other municipal ones. Um, so this is also, this is actually from, uh, from Andrea Tong as well. Uh, and you know, Andrea said, uh, I'd like to discuss how you'd be representing the voice of Bolton, uh, even if our voice isn't in line with your party's policies. So, uh, one of the things that I've always talked about when being a member of Parliament is that I want to be, uh, the voice of my community. And there's lots of, lots of ways to do that. Having town halls are one way. I try to find out what my constituents feel on certain issues and, and how they would like me to vote. Uh, in, in the government of Canada, uh, in, in, in most political parties, there are certain things that, uh, you're required to vote in favor of. Uh, those are things like the budget, uh, and you know, key policies of your party. Uh, but on anything that doesn't touch on that, uh, my belief is that I have to vote the way my constituents want, uh, on those particular issues. So, uh, Andrea, I would encourage you, if you have issues that, uh, you would like to see me vote a certain way, please get in touch with me. Uh, have others do that because that's the way that I inform myself on how I should be voting on certain issues. It's also one of the reasons why I committed in my campaign to have these town hall meetings, uh, four times a year because that's really the way that you're going to be able to get in touch, uh, with your constituents and find out how they feel about certain issues. Shauna, do you have, uh, one that we can, uh, talk about on the, uh, municipal issue, uh, for Mayor Thompson?
Um, I think we got through most of them. I'm just trying to see also if there's anyone on the line that asked a question that I didn't give the opportunity to speak. Uh, we did have another municipal question, Mayor Thompson from constituent Jas Winter. Um, and they were wondering about any future development plans in the area that you could advise on, if there's anything in.
Sure. Uh, so, uh, yes, uh, we've, we've got a number of things on the go. Uh, right now, uh, with Bolton, uh, we're, you know, going through a board hearing to do some expansion there. There's, uh, development taking place in Calladen East. Uh, we have development taking place in Mayfield West as well. Uh, we also have, uh, small communities like Alton and Bell Fountain with small developments taking place there. But also when you talk about development, what of, and we had, do have a lot of employment taking place in Mayfield West as well as the Bolton area. Um, and hopefully we'll get it in Victoria and Tullamore as well. We had, do have a plan that we're trying to work with MTO for the Victoria, uh, Business Park over there. Um, but also the other development I call too is, uh, getting the infrastructure in, especially with broadband and through the SWIFT initiative, which, uh, helps subsidize to get rural connections done like their urban centers. Uh, we, we, we have closed the RFP. We're going through the tenders right now. We hope to have something within the next six weeks, um, to say where and how we're going to get this started. And looking at the projects, we've got about, uh, five point two million of funding that we have combined between what the towns put forward, the federal and provincial government, but also with the federal government, uh, other programs have, they've just introduced with the, uh, also with the a hundred and fifty million that, uh, the provincial government has. Uh, maybe we can tap in to help get the rest of our community connected. Um, SWIFT is also looking at two point O, which is the next phase. And, uh, we're hoping to get at least ninety-five percent of southwestern Ontario covered with that funding. But, uh, what we're looking at is ten percent of that funding because it's ten percent of the population. And, uh, Kyle, we could, hopefully we can have your support on that because it's not just for Calladen, but it's for all of southwestern Ontario from Muskoka, basically right to the Great Lakes. So there's something that's extremely important. But it's one way of getting our kids, the education that they needed, work, uh, especially people working from home. I think that's going to be more of a lifestyle change, especially with COVID. But it isn't about downloading Netflix anymore. What it's about is having to survive at home, operate your business. Also getting our kids educated, uh, especially with telehealth and everything that's required. This is a new era that we're walking into. There's going to be a new norm and part of that is we've got to have fiber to the door. Uh, we've definitely watched how the cell towers are, uh, completely failed for us here in Calladen. Um, you know, they're oversubscribed some places as high as fifteen hundred percent, which is uncalled for, uh, which has caused huge failure for our nine-one-one calls, which is public safety. So I think at this point, I'm not pointing the fingers at Rogers and Bell and all the providers. Let's all work together to find solutions to get our community served the best way, the quickest way we know how.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree. Um, absolutely. Uh, Mayor Thompson, what is the, when, when is, uh, Mayfield West supposed to start? I know I thought it was coming up this year, but, um, it is.
Yeah. So registration's done, so you'll see the, uh, sales, uh, pavilion, the infrastructure is going in now. Uh, the sewers and storm sewers and everything are being put in the ground, uh, as of this week. So, uh, you will be seeing, uh, sales pavilions opening up any day. And, uh, they're going to do it. Uh, I know we're going to be having a bit of a groundbreaking the, uh, end of, uh, August for that area. And, uh, Kyle, uh, I hope you can be part of that as well. Uh, one thing we're going to be celebrating in the Mayfield West, which is between Highway, um, Highway ten and over west towards, uh, Shinkoozie Road. And that first phase, it's, we're going to have ubiquitous wifi. So what it means is that, uh, it's, it's deemed as the first smart community in Ontario and one of the first in Canada. I know some of it's being done in B.C. as we speak. But, uh, this is where you're going to have ubiquitous wifi from your streetlights. So kids don't even, even need a cellphone plan to go to school. Uh, it's going to be completely connected. So when you even buy a new home, it isn't about pecking the countertop or you know, the trims that you're having in the house, but it's also what kind of security system. And, uh, you know, what kind of style of Amazon, I call it the Amazon door where your parcel comes and that, you know, it reads the barcode and you can slip it through the door or, or a piece in the wall. Um, so it's, so it's, uh, it's a new smart communities. It's being done all the time around the world. And, uh, it's about time Canada catches up and with Bell and Rogers have both come to be the major, uh, major providers. Um, so this is something that we're all going to celebrate and, uh, stay tuned. It's going to get interesting in the next few weeks.
Great. Um, just as on one final note, Mayor Thompson, there's a comment in the chat section, uh, from Jennifer, uh, wondering if there's any community come-together events planned at this point, uh, taking COVID into account. Uh, but is there any movie nights in a field, drive-ins, theaters, anything the town's thinking about, maybe boost some community spirit?
We've had a lot of, uh, talks and where we want to go. We have to work with them, uh, our, uh, uh, medical health officer of health for the, uh, region appeal. And at this point, until we can get the COVID numbers in a safe place, you know, less than ten in Peel, it's going to be very difficult to do that. I, I wish we could. Um, you know, we really missed Calladen Day. We've missed a lot of events to bring people together. And I think we need to find ways to bring our community together, and I think it's going to have to be this fall. But we need to, we need to heal as a community and how we go about that. And, uh, as much as what Jennifer's asking for, I totally agree with her. Uh, you know, maybe even with the Bolton camp, we can do something again, but it's how we can get people to do it safely. And the social distancing, uh, we're going to have to get, figure out how, you know, to do that, to, to control the, the impact of the second wave that can come. So our kids can go to school. We're going to have to find ways to wear masks or face shields or just how to, it's just going to be a different way of living till we have vaccines or whatever. So the next couple of years, it's going to be a long drawn affair. And I, I, listen, I know more than anything, my daughter had to cancel her wedding for this September, so it's next year, hopefully. But, um, I think we're, we're, this is going to be a whole new norm for all of us. So it, it's been an emotional roller coaster for a lot of people. But Jen, I totally agree with you. Um, we need to do something, but until the, our medical chief medical officer, a health can say, yes, we can, um, it's going to be a tough one. But when we do, I hope we can call on you and a lot of you that are on the call tonight to be part of that, to help make this possible. Because I think we need these things to help our community come together because we've got a great community at Calladen.
Absolutely.
Great. Well, I think that might be a good place to end it there on a bit of a positive note. So thank you everyone for participating in this evening's virtual town hall. Um, if you are unable to get a question answered by the mayor or Kyle, uh, please feel free to forward them on to us both via email. Kyle's email is kyle dot C back at parle dot G C dot C A. And the mayor is, I believe, mayor at Calladen dot C A. Correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and I'm sure they both able to answer any future questions. Um, and then we would like to invite everyone to provide us with some feedback from this evening's event. Um, if you follow the link, W W W dot Kyle C back dot C A slash Bolton. It's the same link that you would have used to sign up for tonight's event. It's now turned into a comment card where you can leave us some feedback, which will help us in the organization of future events. Um, I'll pass it over to Kyle now for some quick closing remarks.
I think you covered it all. Uh, thanks everyone for joining in tonight. And yes, again, if, uh, you do have a question you weren't uh, able to get an answer to, please send me an email. If you do have any issues with the federal government, my offices and myself are always there to serve you. That could be anything to do with uh, Canada Revenue Agency, uh, um, passports, uh, you name it, anything the federal government does. Uh, we're here to help and, uh, please, uh, get in touch with our office. Okay?
Great. Thanks, everyone. I believe technical support will now be ending the call, but thank you again for your participation.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle.